This is Sharon.
Yeah, I, I sure, I hear better. Sharon.
All right.
Hey, Dan.
Quiet. You got some good things.
Lovely.
Lovely?
Lovely.
Well.
Hi Sharon, how are you all?
Good, thanks for having yourself.
All right, folks, now we stand. Let's see, just to what I say. To the Republic of Washington Sands Foundation. You got this all.
I will leave. For lack of interest.
As usual, it's hard. Jennifer's not able to be with us tonight. She's got some issues to take care of over room. Just popped up, so we'll move on to moving the July 21st regular meeting.
So.
So.
Any in favor?
I got it.
Okay. In terms of reports. Saron was here this month, in the last month, and did a great job on Dartmouth Lane, and did a great job on the station, definitely. We now need to get them back, hopefully that same crew, because they did a great job to work on some of the other items. Bradley, the engineer, and you were talking about a lot of that today, so hopefully we can see them soon. On Lake Stone, we're just waiting for the certified as-built plans from the contractor. And the White Birch bid spec will go out tomorrow. And we'll have an engineer's recommendation at our September board meeting, so we can hopefully award a bid. If there are contractors that you want to make sure get the bid, not only do we advertise it, but we also email it to people that are interested in getting it, that made us aware, so I'm happy with that. We're finding that most people don't look at advertisements, they only look at emails, etc. Water levels were down seven inches since our last meeting, we're actually .11 today. What was two days ago. We're dropping about three one hundreds a day.
Is there anything that can be done to have them slow that down at all, or that, even with the rain last night, we still went down. My boat is sitting literally.
Will probably go up a little bit tomorrow, but no, there's nothing. And this is, this highlights a problem with Plan 2014. Because it looks bad 12 months. All the other lakes still are above their long-term average, not by much, but they're all still above long-term average. We're just below our long-term average by four pike inches. So, last year, the outflow at this time of year was 1,000 cubic meters per second slower than it is today. So the outflow was still really high. This is a glaring problem. The GLAM group is aware of it. The advisory group that they have is aware of it, and this is a recommendation. But it'll be three years or more before any of that change, so we should plan for low water next year. If anybody's got break law projects, next year's gonna be a great year to do them. Might even be able to do some of them yourself, depending on what you're doing. So, this is, this is gonna be a problem. And Jane Corlin has resigned, there's a new chairperson that I think we talked about last month that we're still trying to reach out to and get in touch with. New York Main Street, the bid new word last month needs to be retracted because that contractor would not build three for each price that he gave us on the bid. And we couldn't alter that, so we'll do it again tonight after we rescind it in old business. New York Forward, this is a new grant program that I briefly mentioned last meeting, the announcement came out shortly after. We had to submit a letter of intent by August 10th, so we did that. This will be a way to fund ATP and LWRP projects for the village. This is, this is not something to make up new projects with. It's some, it's a funding mechanism to fund projects that are already on the village's dot. The LWRP open house, next, next meeting is the 31st. So, resident input on the priority of those projects and the viability of those projects will be received at that meeting, and some of that will probably be used, will be used in creating the application, because we have to have an application in by September 23rd. So Sharon is working on that for us, and we'll learn more next month. The awards for New York Forward will come out toward the end of the year, and the formal planning will begin in January. In our Finger Lakes region, there'll be three awards, two at two and a half million dollars each, and one at four and a half million dollars. It's advertised as a $5 million award, but I think the half million dollars pays the consultant, the state hires, to work with us all, because this is really run by a consultant that the state hires. It's a scaled-down version of downtown revitalization, which is something Sharon and I have talked about since before I was mayor. Great way to get on, so. Wigan Boulevard speeding. The County Highway Department placed their black box, which nobody sees, which measured speed. Eighty-five percent of the people, or the eighty-fifth percentile of speed was 26 miles an hour. So the vast majority of people were going under 30 miles an hour. There were four people going above 35 miles an hour, one of whom was going between 45 and 50. And that was at 8:00 AM in the morning. So Governor Hochul signed yesterday the legislation that passed that I found promulgated and supported for us to allow villages to reduce their speed limits to 25 miles an hour, so I've requested the information on how do we do that? So that'll be something we'll tackle this fall, and I don't know whether it's the whole village, we have neighborhoods, we'll find out. And the last thing on my report is the Department of Health has volunteered to do a community meeting on cannabis and new legislation. And the focus will be on what can we control and what we cannot control. Because we'll have, we had some residents ask why we weren't trying to shut the whole thing down. And I'm sure the first time planning board gets an application to put in a dispensary, there'll be quite a conversation in the community, so we need to learn sooner rather than later what we can or can't do. Listen to what the community says after the meeting, and then planning board can make recommendations for changes.
David, I was amazed, we went to the Lake County Fair Friday night, and they had about a 20-by-4 tent set up. And you had to be 21 years of age to go in it, they were selling cannabis in it, and they were smoking it real heavy. Smoke was boiling, you know, I understand it's legal, and I talked with some of the sheriffs, the younger guys that were over there, and they had a steady stream of people saying, oh, how come you're not shutting them down? Why aren't you shutting them down? And they flat out said, because it's legal. You know, but it's just one of those things that it's not something I'd like to walk through either, you know.
You can't sell it, but you can smoke it.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that was just meant for.
Thank you. In terms of water report. They replaced the bell on the, the second bell over in the lift station on Central Ave. Up waste water clearly pushed it out front of the building, did all the sample, the portable sample submitted a station report, state report. Finally got the speed of stuff working right on the water tanks, it's kind of refreshing to have a young guy that's really trying to make use of our tools. Did enough stuff, weekly maintenance at the plant, repair shop for a customer. And he's going through the office, updating forms and doing things like that, and he's also focusing on a new emergency plan book for the water. Quite out of date. Mark Carrera replaced the check valve on South Shore One and the discharge valve on First Creek, which were things we had approved in earlier meetings. Josh has signed up to go to Ray's Water School. Like installed the pump at First Creek after they fixed it, which is another thing we had approved in an earlier meeting. They did have sewer leakage on South Shore that they got rid of. And two loads of sludge held Senate Meadows, which cleared out the drying bed. They're chlorinating for filaments, which in the summer we often get in the tank. I didn't talk to Jeff today, but he was hoping that they would be gone today, that would make progress this week. And this, they've pressed every day since July 5th, which is really good. And he's reminding everybody to keep that oil and grease out of this. Bill, David?
Uh, yeah. I think that I can see right now that we've got in the village is the use of all the, I would call them go first. I had one almost get knocked right off pins and needles right at the corner of our Retter Road before heat here the other day. Um, you know, they don't pay attention. I watched one go by with, with two adults, two kids. The two kids were standing up in the back, spinning around, having a good old time. I understand, mom and dad should be taking care of it. Um, I've run into the purple one downtown again with a group of youngsters in it going, you know, uh, they, they came up out of town with Tommy trying to get to an ambulance call the other day, and turned around and looked at him and smiled and stayed right in line. You know, which I know it's a courtesy, it's not, it's mandatory that they have to move, but things are out of control out here for those. Honest to God, I mean, they've got orange, they've got the orange triangles on them, which is agriculture mostly for slow-moving vehicles, and they just, they're running rampant.
I will bring it up with the sheriff again, but I did talk to him about it at the beginning of the year, and basically they don't want to deal with it.
I kind of got that gist, because I asked him to follow one into town the other day, and it was like, Evan, I said.
I asked them to stop the ones with clearly unlicensed people driving them, and I just saw the purple one with a kid on it. He was nowhere near, he was standing. I'll ask again, but basically they're not interested, is what I got to spring. Because I was trying to get them to, here's our stance.
I think that we should probably try to regulate them and allow them for adult use and only licensed drivers.
I just don't want to be picking up a pile of people out of the damn road, and that's what we're headed, real close to that right now, and it'll be us that will be doing it. And I just don't think it's fit for.
I agree with you, Laurie, and there is a process to do that. Sackets Harbor is trying to do it. He's sending me information on what needs to be done, but it also requires action by the state legislature. So, that's something we shouldn't forget, and maybe we can start putting those pieces together, because they'll get back in session next year.
Okay.
Bud?
Uh, I didn't have the other half, I couldn't print the ambulance report.
Okay, I don't think anybody wants to, because you didn't get one either.
No, I got it, I just couldn't print it, or else, yeah, I didn't get home.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, there, it went out, I mean, I mailed it out on, on DM, obviously, well, he's typical, but.
I saw it.
Okay.
I didn't print it, but I saw it.
It just had numbers of model calls and that stuff, I had not figured.
Basically, your, your call volume is up for continues to be.
Yes.
That was, summertime is typical.
Yes, well, in fact, that, so, yeah, pretty much, yeah, pretty much.
For highway, highways doing their, you know, end of summer stuff, general maintenance. Rush for August is not complete, next pickup date being September 12th. For those that have to get that last bit of treason stuff went down. The speed sign has been reinstalled on Margarita Road to hopefully mitigate the speeding again. Featherly Drive Memorial is coming along, is now fully seated. Most of the new gardens is underway, they wrap up the next couple of weeks. Thank you to those that donated, and those that have given, lending a hand in doing so.
Fred Whitewood was a huge help.
Right, thank you, Fred. Paying quote added for replacement of driveway at South Shore Road that was damaged during the water break. Seconds for a fuel tank for their 2004 International, it's taking just rock spots at the bottom. Being proactive, just reactive. The coming weeks, start wrapping up a lot of the main projects, transition to servicing equipment before the busy fall. As always, if you have any questions, don't hesitate.
Laurie, I've been working with the playground committee, we've visited, I think it's eight playgrounds total now. Um, we've had several meetings, we're gonna have another one with another vendor on the 9th of September, I think it is. Um, great group of people, really taken hold of it, and that sort of thing. Um, and I'll have more on that later. For the LWRP, if there's a meeting on the 24th of the membership of the LWRP, I will not be able to attend that, because I'll be in Vermont, but I will attend it via Zoom. Um, and then the community meeting is being held on August 31st, and what time was it, Sharon?
It's six, five to six thirty.
Five to six thirty. Um, and while I'm thinking about that, for a future agenda, so this is a parking lot item, we need to talk about microphones for the board meetings and the planning board meetings, because the other day's meeting was so muffled, you couldn't hear what was going on.
We're bidding a proposal.
Okay.
For that.
Okay, great, okay, so we'll have something on.
Yeah, hopefully by the next meeting.
Okay, great. Um, been working with the CEC, we're to 1,500 points, I think it is, and we're heading up higher, I hope. Fairly soon. Um, I thought this flash event was really exciting, and I'd like to congratulate Jennifer and everybody in the community that worked on it, it seemed like it did a good job. A lot of people attended it. Have we talked with any of the businesses or anything to see if they improve their business by, how will we measure stuff like that?
You know, I know only, one of, one of the big complaints was the fact, and it's, it's hard to handle, but they had three sites all going at the same time, and it took away from each one of the sites. And where the music was over underneath the cupola at the beach, there was no water, there was no, no vendor over there to just, you know, it's 90 degrees, and that was just, it's constructive criticism, basically what it is, but that's something that you really need to think about next year, to just say something to Jen or whoever that, you know.
I think there were a lot of those little things that were you learn as you go.
Oh, yeah, we, we had a debrief a few days after the event, Dresden, and there's a pretty long list of things. Will be different if we do it again. But basically, what I learned is it's gonna cost us about $30,000 to do something like that. The village has some expenses from that that we didn't expect, and they collected, I think, $18,000, so in my mind, what, if we do something again, it needs to be pretty scaled down, and I'm not sure who does it. Because neighborhood association isn't really doing much, and probably isn't able to do much, and we don't have anybody in the village to do it. So it has to be an all-volunteer thing. I know Dresden spent I know Dresden spent a ton of hours, more or less on a volunteer basis. Um, Jennifer spent a lot of time and and many other people did setting up, taking down. But the logistics of bringing it all together were much more complicated than I expected.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. And there was a lot of people that were quietly working. Um, and then uh the planning boards, of course, been active, um, and. That meeting, I had to attend telephonically and it was very, very difficult, as I said before. Um. And then my last comment was, did it type the survey to the community to find out where we want to go? Um, years ago, you did that when we were doing things. Is it time? Should we be asking questions about the people that actually live here? Did they like this flash event? Why wasn't good? Um, do they want the downtown vision plan? What do they expect? Well, I I'm not sure what the wording should be, but we probably should try to find out.
They've done that through the ATP. They're doing it right now through the LWRP. Um, so I, I think that's cover. We're not surveying people on the flash or splash, but we're listening to people on the splash.
Okay, alright.
Sharon?
Yeah, one of the things that's going to happen, um, is part of the uh the public meeting for the LWRP will go more. Project list is uh is that there will be an opportunity on the website. Which I'll, you know, discuss with you guys tomorrow because I had to call with the consultant this afternoon. Uh, for more people, it's not necessarily a formal survey, but we'll get the message out there. That all of the stuff that's presented on thirty-first, we're going to uh give several extra days. For the rest of the residents to be able to input their uh their desires for these projects. Uh, via a link on the village's website. So that pretty, that pretty much, I think, Lori, will will help get the opinions of the folks here. About what they want to see.
I, 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 I love that Sharon, if they have a, having for that, but I, at this time of year. As busy as everybody is, who's going to see the link and how many are actually going to respond versus how many are at the town would be my own question of that.
Well, we'll put it in the shoreline, which goes out to six hundred and some people. Um, they all are residents, but they'll all have an opportunity as well. I mean, there's no perfect solution. We're having a public meeting now because everybody is here. So ideally, we fill the fire department. But I bet you, I can tell you right now who's going to be in the fire department.
And we wanted, we were strongly encouraged to do this before uh before people started to leave and go. South in September and it's more meaningful, I think, you know. People are here in the village and, yeah, they are committed to uh to comment and to show up. I can't tell you who's going to show up, you know, but I don't know. Um, all I know is that if we decided to hold it in October, the first thing that would happen would would be. We work here, why don't you do it in August?
Yeah, I understand that too.
Uh, yeah, then they're done. I've been there dumb, yeah, and uh, and I, you know, I don't want to repeat the performance of that, of that critique.
One of my wife reads that shoreline every time, every week in the service.
A lot of people do, actually. I get comments on every one of them.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, Kevin?
For July, I only had six permits issued. Um, like Laura said, planning has been very busy, zoning's been very busy. Um, my call lines up quite a bit for July more than normal. Um, seven hundred and forty dollars in fees generated and then registered for all of my training the rest of the year.
Alright, any public comment?
Oh, I have to, can you go to Zoom and let me know?
Or go ahead. Anybody on Zoom want to make a comment? There's only two of you probably that are going to comment, but then. Alright, we'll close public comment, move on to all the business. As I mentioned in my report, we need to rescind a bid that we made last. Month, so Sharon has been paying enough to write a resolution. Whereas at this regular meeting on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the village of Sodus Point. Sodus Point Village Board authorized the mayor under contract with their E to construct three shared outdoor dining shelters. Along the periphery of Oscar First Park at a cost of ninety-two hundred dollars per shelter. And the cost for three shelters not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Whereas subsequently awarded contract. Derek Bean indicated that because of the shut, number of shelters was reduced from six to three for budgetary reasons. He could not construct three shelters at the unit price quoted and whereas the new quoted price was increased to nine thousand five hundred fifty dollars per shelter. For total cost of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which exceeded the total budget available for this project. By a thousand fifty dollars and whereas once a ward is made by resolution, the bid amount should not be changed. Now therefore be resolved, bid award to Derek Bean, construction of three outdoor shelters is hereby rescinded.
So.
Sorry. On favor?
Yes.
Everybody?
Hi. I have a question before we go into the next one, which is the award of the one. Do we have a plan for where these are going to go? Cause I actually had a lot of people contact me. About the concern for where these were going to be located in regard to the ball field.
Yeah, they're all laid out and they're outside the two hundred and seventy feet perifery of the ball. They were all laid out like Costas when we started this project several years ago and and they're on a map. Um, I actually met with Tim Jones last week because there's six on the map and said, where's the best place to put three?
Okay.
So.
And where did we decide?
I don't know if it is or anything, but there's, they start at the row and there's two. Pretty quick in and then there's, there was going to be another one and then I think. On the outside of center field, there's another, but they're all on this side.
So they're kind of near the visible then or? Okay, along.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, I think it's one, two and four or one, two.
The bid document also says that uh successful bidder. But uh will meet with the village and.
And enough locations may change a little bit based on the uh swelling that was done. Um, although Costas did it and they knew about the swelling, but it seems to me where some of those are okay to have in the swell and half out of the swell. So we'll have to make those adjustments.
And did, was there, well, was there already the maintenance of these? Where was that coming from? Cause I know that was in question the last time when Derek got the.
Highway Department.
Highway Department's going to maintain them.
And there are more of that. Alright, so move on to new business. It's time we had two bids. Whereas the village of Sodus Point prepared a second bid package for the construction of three shared outdoor dining shelters to be funded by a grant. By a grant from New York Main Street Program. And whereas the bid document was advertised in the village's official newspaper on July thirty-first, the bid submission due August fifteenth. Whereas bid document was also posted to the village website. Whereas the following contractor responded, Derek Bean, ninety-eight fifty per shelter, twenty-nine, five, five, oh, total price. Martin's custom tag size, eighty-eight hundred dollars per shelter, twenty-six thousand, four hundred dollars total bid price. And whereas the total remaining New York Main Street grant budget for the construction of shared outdoor dining shelters is twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. Now therefore be it resolved, Sodus Point Village Board authorizes the mayor to enter through Patrick with Martin's custom tag size. To contr- to construct three shared outdoor dining shelters along the east periphery of Oscar First Field. At a cost of eighty-eight hundred dollars per shelter and a total cost for three shelters not to exceed twenty-six thousand, four hundred. And we had further resolved, the total cost should be paid for by a New York Main Street grant funds awarded to the village in twenty-twenty. Anybody want to move it?
Well, I don't want to be sticking to mine, but you know how I feel about it.
Yep.
So, you know, I know it, I, I think it would be a good addition down there and such, but I love my vote. I, I mean, I'm not going to vote against it, but that, but I want to know that, that's why I can.
It's why they're kept outside the two hundred and seventy feet that you specified.
Yeah.
You hit it far enough.
Use it for. Use it for parking.
These will get beaned a time or two.
Oh, yeah, no, they'll, yeah, and they'll get used, because I know that the picnic tables do down there in the corner by the. You know, I know that stuff all gets used and the people enjoy it and it's definitely a good addition. It's just.
I really struggled with why we put these there instead of in the Willow Park area. Because the Willow Park seems to be the logical place for people.
They have to walk further with their food. This was really, this was conceived when Phil had the food trucks. And since then, many people have gotten food at either Hat's Point or Six Fifty or Jack's. And they walk to that corner to sit on that picnic table or even on the lawn, I see you said.
Yeah.
So that, that's why we're there.
I, I think the idea of keeping them closer to the downtown part as far as the businesses and that, I think that's a good idea. I just wish there was a closer spot that wasn't involved. That's all. I'll make the motion that we do it, you know.
I'm kind of neutral either way, so I'll side with it. Not a fan of it, but I'm not against it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Lori?
I'm opposed.
Alright, I'll vote for it. Next part of the business is buying a trailer that will haul the excavator. Which weighs fifteen thousand pounds and you can haul it on a trailer rated ten thousand pounds. So we have two quotes, one from Towmaster for eighteen thousand pounds capacity trailer. For seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars made sense. And one from Seneca Farm and Home Supply for twenty-two thousand pound capacity trailer. For sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I, I've got a couple of questions about these. The electronic brakes was one of them. Um, because they seem to corrode a lot, if you have any. On a long-term basis. It also seems like it's small and I wonder if we're better off with getting something a little larger in case we get another piece of equipment that we need to move. Um, and then the third thing would be, um, the air brakes coming. Do we need air brakes? Are we gonna, what are we gonna tow this with? That sort of thing and the size of the bed. The bed is a concern. And we're just moving right now, one small item, right? What, what is this going to move again?
It's going to move the excavator, the many of all.
But, but if we end up with a bigger one, you know, what's the lifespan of something like this? Do we expect to have it? Or will we be turning, are we going conservatively to save a few bucks? I know that there is.
No, we're buying a big, heavy duty trailer. The tra- the trailer that we have used is nearly twenty years old.
I, I know we need the new one. I'm not.
No, I know, but I'm just trying to say, we're likely to use it for a long, long time.
Not only that, the trailers, the brakes are going to have to be regulated to the size of the trailer and the weight of the truck.
That's right. Yeah, tow this with a three-quarter ton and you've got, it's got the built-in trailer and games. You can set that.
Okay.
That's why you have an electronic brake, as you understand.
So electronic brake is more advantageous than a gas.
It's going to match up with your, your braking system built, right?
Yeah, you, you want to cut, if you went to air brakes, then you're talking about limiting it to being towed by the dump trucks.
Okay.
Because regular vehicles are all electric brakes. The other thing is, you know, for, what's the, the big one is what, twenty thousand pounds?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand. And it's less money.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're going to do it, go for the camera, go for the big one.
Yeah.
That gives you the extra that, or somewhat.
The other thing is, does this have any kind of electronic ramp or anything and are we?
No, there's no electronic ramp.
Can they?
It's going to be pulled down ramps.
Okay.
Cause the weight of the machine, the weight, what you're doing.
Okay.
They're, trust me, I mean, it's something you can drive all the time.
Okay.
They're more cumbersome, but it's what you need to support the load.
Then I say, let's go for the big one.
You making a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. I, for the, for this, for the twenty-two thousand pounder or whatever, the bigger one, the sixteen thousand.
It's less money, it's sixteen thousand. Yeah.
And it's long.
Sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Fox Trail twenty-foot easy over to twenty-two K.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Do we have a second?
The next one is coming up because we only got one bid. What's not in here? Um, this is the one that Brad talked about, is.
All the things.
No, the driveway repair.
Okay.
If you drive over and look at this driveway, there's spork marks off. Rather than use this bottom of the bucket, the base of the bucket to push gravel, we use the forks. So, it must have been a lot.
Yeah, I got you.
I, I missed one on old business and that would be, um, concerns for the website still being out of date. Um, if you get on there, the planning board is still not updated, um, changing membership. I think Tim Jones was on it the last time I saw it. Um, last time we referred to things that were supposed to be on there that aren't there. Um, and so I wanted to make sure that they were updated. Um, and if we need help or if we need our planning board secretary to maybe help with that at this point, are we? Cause I know we talked about that at one time.
I, I thought all of that had been updated, so.
Yeah, I, I didn't know it wasn't updated, so we'll go through that.
For me, honestly, that's just a quick email.
Yeah, just tell us and we'll just do it.
Okay, well, it was brought to my attention.
Yeah, no.
We'll, we'll have to take a look.
And then for a future gen- future thing, I'd like to see us review the processes for the planning board meetings. And this only board meeting notification, how I've had a couple of people from the planning board say they don't get this stuff timely enough. So that they have time to do their homework.
So they get everything, there's policies, they get everything at the same time.
Yeah. Okay.
Because they all do get it based on the policy. Yeah, so they disagree with the policy.
Well, then we should look at the policy, maybe the policy has to be changed or something, I don't know. Um.
Okay, so the, the net, the other item on new business, which is not on the agenda, is this fuel tank. That um on our dump truck that was rapping away. And I think the truck is actually at regional right now, just waiting for us to approve this quote. And so forty-four, four thousand, four hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-nine cents to get a new fuel tank put on. Our eighteen-year-old dump truck.
What's the lifespan expectancy of the dump truck?
Probably thirty years.
Yeah, probably there.
I, I'm that we approve four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Everybody, alright.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, no kidding, especially right now.
Alright, it's time to bear bills.
Eight, one, eight, forty-seven, pulling eighty-one thousand, six, fifty-four, eight, three. General, thirty-five thousand, two, oh, four, two, seven, water, fifteen thousand, four, twenty-two, eight, four. And wastewater, three, one thousand, twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
We're making motion, we accept it, it's right.
Alright, favor? Alright, under other business, I would like to schedule a workshop to talk about ARPA and anything else we need to talk about. But I'd, I'd like to do it either the last week in September or sometime in the early part of October, because my September is very busy.
I think October.
Okay.
Is better for.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's, as long as you're not the end of October, I don't have time for that.
No, I'd like to do it before the October board meeting.
I need to do it before October tenth, I'm gonna be away for a week.
So the week of the third.
Give it a shot.
What day works best for people? Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday?
What week is it, the first even?
Tuesday, Tuesdays are bad for me, the first.
Yeah, and I will be available on that Thursday. Wednesday, the fifth? At six thirty or early six o'clock?
I would try to take an hour.
Wednesday at six o'clock is, yeah.
That's fine.
Silver Lars will supply pizza for dinner.
Write it down.
Hey, I ain't no problem with that, not at all, not at all.
Any other business?
Yeah, my question about, I'm sorry, go ahead, about the ARPA. Yeah. What is that grant? What's the, what's the baseline, what's it used for? I mean, we're, we're looking at, over Western Wayne, Walworth's is doing an ARPA grant as well, and I'm not sure if it's the same one. Where it's, it's doled out, you guys get the money and you go it out to, uh, businesses or that kind of thing, is that?
We, we decide as a board how to spend our eighty thousand something down.
Okay.
We've already spent twenty thousand on a stormwater study for Sill Shore. So we have about sixty thousand dollars left to allocate. There's no rush in allocating it, we don't have to spend it till twenty twenty five. When we're ever able to submit a status report through their electronic system, we will be telling them that we're using it to replace revenue we didn't get. So we can spend it for anything that we would normally spend it on, except paying debt.
Okay.
Or paying, we can't put it in pension plans. There's a couple of things you can't do with it, but basically, we can do anything we want.
Okay, yeah, that's about the same way, that's gotta be the same one, Walworth's.
It is, it's all the same.
They got a hundred thousand to, yeah, go out to the, uh, non-for-profits, small businesses, that kind of thing, they can use it for that, so, okay, that's all.
Yeah, we, we can, we can use it for that, we can use it to pay employees, we can use it for project, we can use it for a lot of different things. We, we talked about it probably a year ago, I didn't pull my file out, so I don't remember the date. But we talked about a while ago, we had some ideas. Um, it's, it's time to get together and talk about it again.
I, I received the second.
Yeah, we have all the money now.
Excellent.
Speeding things, uh, you know, that, that with the Boulevard, I appreciate that, because I can go back to a couple of people and say, get, you know, maybe it's worth it to be a problem. Uh, but I, it brought to my attention that somebody was on a burnover and, of course, last week. Um, guy locked it up, where the ditch almost, you know, I, there's the rain, I'm just going secondhand. Uh, and then I know myself, I was almost clipped walking across the bridge by armies sometimes as I said. Um, fourteen is, is an issue. And I, there's a Facebook post or two, and I kind of watched it, and, uh, people are really starting to complain.
There's a couple of known troopers that are just sitting up there.
I actually have, I actually know one, and, uh, he's told me that, that, you know, they're very aware of it. But they need us to do something to make them.
We, we need to bring forward a motion and make a formal request to them. And if they approve it and we pay for it, it can be done.
Right.
And that's what they told.
Yeah.
Right, and, and just starting that we're doing with the DOC or whatever, or for the state and trying to figure out what their new rules are as far as making towns speed limits and whatnot.
That, that has.
Yeah, that's just within the.
It's only within the village, it doesn't address the forty five that we talk about or any of that stuff. It's just, so our, our village speed limit is thirty. We, somehow we can probably change it to twenty five over some period of time.
Right. And if it starts to, or tight sides, I can throw that in there.
Okay.
And then I have two very quick legal questions for, um, executive session.
So you're making a motion, we move into this extra session for a legal discussion?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna terminate the electronic.
Reference.
So what we have to do is.
See you later, Sharon. Thank you.
So.